Yay.
And I believe everyone is here now.
Okay, so let's go. Called order. Introduction of late items.
Counselor Brooke, we have no late items.
Thank you very much, Monica. Number three, approval of agenda. Three point one. That April, that the April sixth, twenty twenty one committee of the whole agenda be approved as circulated. Mover moved by Tom, second, second by Gary. All those in favor?
One moment. Before you pass that resolution, can we that? Can we make that as amended? We would like to move the urban systems presentation down under tax rate multiples, please.
All right. So shall I just go through it again then? At the April sixth, twenty twenty one. Committee of the whole agenda. Which has been modified, be approved as circulated. Mover and a second or all those in favor? Okay. Adoption of minutes, four point one. But the minutes of the February first, twenty twenty one committee of the whole meeting be adopted as circulated. Move seconded, all those in favor? That one's good. Okay, five point one, we're moving down the list. So we're going to jump to five point two. Which I know is everyone's favorite draft twenty twenty one budget update. That the committee of the whole direct staff to draft the twenty twenty one five year financial plan by law. With a tax increase of three point five one percent as presented in the April sixth, twenty twenty one report from the director of finance. Ms. Crossman, you want to take it away?
Thank you, Counselor Brooke. I can take it away. So I've submitted a report that shows changes to the budget since you last saw it. It's been a while since we've had the budget before you. The last time you saw it was February the first. So since then, we've made the following changes. We've added an increase to the city hall seismic upgrade design. And that's funded from surplus and that was already approved by council at the March first council meeting. Next, we've added the Canada Avenue pay parking lot expansion. This is funded from the parking reserve and was also approved by council at the same March first meeting. Next, we've added a one year temporary planner position. This is funded from the COVID safe restart grant funds and was discussed and approved by council at the March fifteenth council meeting. And I've adjusted that downwards to not a full year. So a part of it will show up in twenty twenty one and the balance will show up in twenty twenty two. Then we've added the records management plan, also funded from the COVID safe restart grant funds. This was discussed and approved by council at the March fifteenth meeting. Now, the next four items kind of go together. All four of these are in and out of the police bridging capital fund, so they don't affect taxes at all. But we have removed one capital project funding as it realized some significant cost savings. So we don't need the forty thousand on the third, fourth street lane storm drainage improvements. And we've added in three other additional capital projects, all from police bridging capital. And I've put some descriptions of them there. But I'll just hand it over to Mr. Murphy to maybe just go through each one briefly and list it out for you.
So through the chair, essentially what we're asking is to reallocate some of the funds that have been allocated to third, fourth. Lane, our storm drainage improvements, that project is complete. They were able to find a solution that was less costly than originally anticipated. So there's leftover funds in that category, so they're asking to reallocate them in some of those funds to other areas. So the Arbutus storm improvement. There's concerns about the intake. This is at the end of Arbutus adjacent to QMS. It's essentially a ditch with an open grate intake into the storm sewer currently. And so there's concerns about that being an open and accessible hazard. And so there's been a design proposal to improve the intake there and regrade the areas immediately around the intake. So that's request for twelve thousand to complete that project. Geotechnical slope assessments. So this be to update the steep slopes assessment that was last looked at in twenty fifteen, in particular around Centennial Park and underneath Pine Avenue. And so to confirm that nothing has changed in those areas for those steep slopes. And also to expand the assessment further along, including areas around Cavell Vista and Karen's Four Stairs themselves. And so the requests for funds there are to complete that study with a geotechnical engineer. And lastly is so there's an ongoing program to monitor groundwater levels, so water levels underground. In the downtown area, there's a number of wells that have been in place for a number of years now. And recently, just a month or so ago, we updated those wells, updated the loggers, downloaded the information, made sure they're all working. And there's a proposal to add another three wells, including one behind the VSO. And one at Evans and Jubilee for that area. And and then Canada Ave and First Street. And so these additional funds would be to add those new wells so that we can continue to gather as much valuable information as possible. And the importance of groundwater is or is associated with the potential for underground parking in areas downtown and understanding the limitations for whether underground parking can be included in developments going forward. So that has implications for developers and the city, knowing what opportunities are available for development.
Any questions on that? Gary Bruce, Counselor Bruce?
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My goodness me. And I was just wondering, on those additional ground level monitoring wells. Do would they be in at the street or are they on our property or or just practically speaking, where do they sit? Are they on private property or our property or the street?
So generally, we're looking for our city right of way. And so, for instance, can be in a sidewalk. Or if there's boulevard space and literally all it is, is a cap that you'll see at surface.
Yeah, just a green, kind of a green box.
Not even just, yeah, a small, just, yeah, like a small utility box.
And then, and then there's hardware down there which is measuring the depth of the water and so on.
Yeah, correct.
So I have a question, Brian. These are to determine what the groundwater level is. So when I think of a well, I think of something that's a hundred and fifty or five hundred feet deep. But these are, these are very, very shallow.
To the chair, yes. I'm not sure the actual depth, but it would be a number of meters.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Tom, Councilor Duncan. You're on mute, Tom.
There, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the first four items that were presented. Am I correct to assume that the first two are from general revenue and the other two, the records management and the temporary planner were funded out of COVID money?
To Counselor Duncan through the chair, the first two. Number one was the city hall seismic upgrade and that's funded from surplus. So that's not, not funded from taxes. The second one was the Canada Avenue pay parking lot and that was funded from the parking reserve. So also not funded from taxes and you're correct, the next two were funded from the COVID grant.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Crossman, then we'll go back to you for continuation of the report.
Okay, thank you. So we've had a number of budget meetings now and we're at the end of the process as far as taxation collection. So what's, what's going to happen next is we're going to bring back the actual bylaw for three readings and adoption. And it has to be adopted before May fifteenth. So we've worked backwards from that date in order to have enough meetings to do the proper protocols. So we expect to bring the bylaw back for three readings on April nineteenth and then adoption on May the third. And attached to this report is a detailed updated listing, which shows the twenty twenty one budget. And it also shows the updated twenty twenty final numbers as correspond with the end of our audit. So those numbers should not be changing anymore. And as well, attachment B shows the updated capital budget. And I've just highlighted the new items in a darker blue to draw your attention to what's new since you last saw it. So that's it for that report. So there is a recommendation to direct staff unless there's further discussion or questions on the budget as a whole.
Any questions? Counselor Newington?
Yeah, I was just searching for it again. My, my one question was I noticed that there was administration charges for public works and there was another one, I can't recall now. And they were a negative and how did that work?
Well, there's, there's a lot of administration charges that go back and forth through all the different departments. So for instance, administration charges are charged to the water and sewer funds. So when we are printing out water bills and mailing them and doing those sorts of things, we don't in the finance department, we don't reclassify our time as to whether we're working on water or sewer or or general. We just calculate a monthly admin charge and do an entry. And then, so when you have admin charge, for instance, in water, it will be an expense and then in general, it will be like a revenue. Like we're earning money in the general fund and it's costing money in the water fund. So there are various places that it's going in and out. And whenever you do see a minus, there will be a plus somewhere else to match it.
Thank you very much. I just wanted that explained for the, for the general public because they'll, they'll see that and they'll probably get a little confused about it. But thank you.
So I have a question if I might, I don't have to ask any permission because I'm in charge of this. Anyway, in revenues, other, there's a dramatic increase in other revenue. And I just wondered if you can give me just a quick breakdown of what other is comprised of.
Well, I'd say the the most dramatic increase there would be the cannabis contributions that are agreements there. So other is comprised of some sale of tourism books. I believe it's the Totem Tour books. We sell some of those. We've got a Fortis operating fee in there, so the utility company pays us to operate. And we've got land use alteration fees, so when people apply for rezoning. Subdivision application fees, plan processing fees. We also have emergency program revenue in there. So this particular year, we were able to submit receipts for some of our additional expenses that we have for COVID. For instance, extra cleaning of the public washrooms. Extra security because we were having the public washrooms open twenty four hours a day for a period of time. So we were able to recover close to seventeen thousand dollars from EMBC for submission of various expenses to do with that. And then, yeah, and then the cannabis contributions.
Thank you very much. Okay, where do we go from here? Have you more, Ms. Crossman?
No, I think that's all for me on this. So just moving the recommendation.
All right, then we're going to move the recommendation that the committee of the whole direct staff to draft the twenty twenty one five year financial plan by law with the tax increase of three point five one percent as presented in the April sixth, twenty twenty one report from the director of finance. Mover? Seconder? All those in favor? Moving right along. Oh. Where are we at now? Urban systems, are they're not ready to make their presentation? Okay, so let's go to five point three. Tax rate multiples. That the committee of the whole direct staff to draft the twenty twenty one tax rate by law with a commercial tax multiplier that achieves an even percentage increase between the average commercial and the residential and residential and the tax multiple ranging from two point five to two point six oh percent. You know, mover and a seconder to that. All those in favor?
Oh, we should.
Monica?
Can we pause at that? I believe that Bernice will have some dialogue that she'd like to present regarding.
Oh, of course, of course. Ms. Crossman?
Thank you, Counselor Brooks. So this is the next step in, in the budget process. Now we've decided how much tax to collect. Now we need to decide how to distribute that between commercial and residential. So we have the completed role from BC Assessment saying what everybody's property is worth. Actually, after the printing of this report, we have now received the revised assessment rule, which is issued on April the first or March thirty first, sorry. And it lists the revised assessment. So anyone that had talked to BC Assessment about their value and had asked them to do a review of it. So any of those changes are now captured in the revised role. But this report in front of you is still working off of the completed role, which was from January first, as there wasn't time to rewrite it between publishing the agenda. So working off of those numbers. The City of Duncan has a policy statement that says, "City Council considers the current proportions of taxes collected and current assessment class multiples as reasonable. However, as opportunities arise, council will attempt to lower the percentage of taxes collected from the business class and attempt to hold or lower the business class multiple with a goal to have a multiple at the fiftieth percentile of other municipalities, the median." So I've started out by listing the assessment increases. So you can see on the report, I've got them listed all the way back from two thousand and four, when an average residential home was worth a hundred and thirty one thousand eight hundred dollars. All the way up to twenty twenty one, when an average residential home was, is now worth three hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. So that's just background interesting information. On page three, same sort of thing, I've just listed the history of the tax rates and the multiples. So all the way from two thousand and four, you can see the commercial multiple was at two point eight eight. It went up to a high of three point five four. And going through the years, we're now back down to two point five six in twenty twenty one. So just for information sake, I have reworked all the numbers since I received the revised role on March thirty first. And the, the number still applies, two point five six is still going to work for us to achieve our goal of staying in the median. Just page four shows some interesting comparatives for your information. It shows the neighboring communities' tax rates. Now, these numbers don't add up from one side to the other. So the municipal rate plus the CVDR, CVRD rate. And then there's multiple other rates that I just didn't list because there's, it would make the table too full. But once you add in all the other jurisdictions that have rate, have a tax rate on our tax bill, it comes up to seven point five. And then we've got Ladysmith, Lake Couch and North Couch and six point nine, seven point nine and six point five. So those are residential tax rates. And then if we go a little further and show the twenty twenty taxes paid by an average home. These are all twenty twenty numbers because nobody has set their twenty twenty one tax rates yet. So we're still working on, on last year's. But I've shown the assessed value of an average home in Duncan, which for twenty twenty was three hundred and seventy eight. An average home in Ladysmith is worth four hundred and fifty five. Average home in Lake Couchin is worth three eighty two. And an average home in North Couchin is worth four hundred and seventy three. So if you calculate the property taxes on an average home, count in the parcel taxes that each municipality charges and then add in user fees such as garbage, water, sewer. You come up to a total annual cost of an average home in each of those towns. So then, just because I like to make things super fun. I have showed the comparisons using the Duncan average value. So if we were to say that a home in Ladysmith was worth three hundred and seventy eight, just like it is in Duncan, but using their tax rates. This is what the property taxes would be in each place. We've got Duncan, Ladysmith, Lake Couch and a North Couch. And so these are just statistics that are interesting because we always want to make sure we're not too far off in our rates and they're being reasonable. And on page five, I've done the same thing for commercial tax rates. So I've done city rate, the CVRD rate, and then coming up with a total rate for commercial in each Duncan, Ladysmith, Lake Couchin and North Couchin. Are there any questions on these statistics before I go forward into the analysis? Okay. So.
So exactly where are we with the percentile for the businesses? Are we at fifty? I think we used to be at forty two. Where are we now?
We're exactly at fifty.
Okay.
Fifty is two point five six. Or sorry, the fifty, fiftieth percentile is just two point five. So we've got some decimal places to play with behind that, but we're definitely in the fiftieth percentile. Okay, so as I said earlier, we, we can, as part of setting the tax rates, we can smooth out the fluctuations in assessments so that one class of taxpayers is not experiencing much larger increases than another class. So what we're doing is trying to even out between residential and commercial so that each class is experiencing the same sort of result. So interestingly enough, we're ending up at the same multiple that we had in twenty twenty, two point five six. And the medium, the median is two point five. So while we're a percentage point, a few percentage points away, it is still within the median. So I've listed out all the, the details about the calculations that were done. But what it's coming out to is if we set the multiple at two point five six, which is our target. This will result in an average home tax increasing by forty four dollars a year, which is three point two percent. And an average business increasing a hundred and eighty four dollars a year, which is also three point two percent. So we've achieved an even increase between residential and commercial while staying with the, within the median of two point five multiple. I gave a little example about how decimal places can make a difference. So it's, it's a kind of an in-depth sight of how, how that can change things. But, but I believe the, the end result, we've achieved our goals and the recommendation is to I gave myself a little bit of wiggle room to set the multiple between two point five and two point six because at the time I didn't know what the revised role would come in at. So you can either move the recommendation as is, and I will set it at two point five six as, as I know that's going to work. Or you can change the recommendation to say specifically two point five six. Might be easiest just to just move it as, as it is with the range and then I can set it in between there. I think that's it, unless there's any questions regarding this whole process.
Any questions, Counselor Bruce?
Thank you. Thanks, Bernice. With the, when we look at the most recent median of all, the BC municipalities is two point five. And we're at two point five six. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is, and this, I really don't know, but should we, should we be, should we be putting on the brakes even harder to, to get down to two point five? Or is that an unreasonable thing to do?
Well, we're not that far off. We're really, really close. And if we were to change it down to two point five, then it would skew the increase. And the average home, I don't have the numbers exactly, but say the average home would have a one percent increase and the average business would have a seven percent increase. So what we're trying to do is make it so that they both have a similar increase and it's, it's a little smoother for everyone.
Okay, just, just wondering. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Bernice, thank you for your, as usual, scintillating explanation of the budget finances. Then I'll, I'll read the question again. Tax rate multiples, that the committee of the whole direct staff to draft the twenty twenty one tax rate with a commercial tax multiple that achieves an even percentage increase between the average commercial and residential and a tax multiple ranging from two point five to two point six percent. Mover and a seconder? All those in favor? All those in favor? Moving right along. So we're gonna go to new business. Monica.
I believe we have Urban Systems entering for their presentation.
Okay, and so that is back to four point four point two. Five point one, sorry. Urban Systems Presentation, Official Community Plan, O C P, and Transportation of the Mobility Strategy. Take it away, please, Urban Systems.
Thanks, everyone. Can can you hear us here?
Yes.
Good. So I think if it's all right, we're we're gonna share our screen. We're gonna walk the through a little slide presentation.
Can everyone see the presentation?
Okay. Great.
Blowing you down? Yeah.
Yeah, good on my end. Thanks, Sean. So thank you, everyone. Really, really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and and discuss with you our kicking off of both the Official Community Plan Review and Transportation and Mobility Strategy. Dan Casey, I'm here also with Sean Heffernan's on the line. And between the two of us, we're going to walk the group through about a thirty to thirty five minutes presentation here. We've got a bit of material that both for background, understanding of process, as well as some prodding questions. And so what we're hoping is that we can make our way through the material and have a good discussion at the end. Any burning questions along the way, though, please do put up your hands and and let us know. So a quick overview, we're gonna walk through this joint project approach. We're gonna zoom in specifically on the Official Community Plan Review, then do the same for the Transportation and Mobility Strategy. We're gonna talk specifically about the community engagement activities that'll be undertaken for both projects and the majority of which in a in a joint fashion. We want to talk about this initiative, potential project identity. And so I'll I'll pause on that near the end and then we'll we'll conclude with some next steps and Q and A. So like I mentioned off the top, and very importantly here, this is a joint process. So this will result in two separate plans, a Transportation and Mobility Strategy, as well as your Official Community Plan Review and Update. But but this is a joint process, and so technical activities, as well as the engagement activities that'll be undertaken, are gonna be undertaken side by side one another. You've also got a single consulting team made up of a number of team members that are overlapping on both projects. And so that is a very key theme to all of this. And we did want to just pause here and and give the quick opportunity to meet your consultant team. So both Sean Heffernan is on the line, as well as myself, we're with Urban Systems. We and the majority of our team are based in our Victoria office, and we really pride ourselves as a group that has a spirit and service for vibrant communities. And we are hopeful that you see that and that comes becomes obvious in the projects we undertake on your behalf.
Over to me. Thanks for the intro, Dan. Yeah, so as Dan said, we're gonna break the presentation into two pieces. Well, a number of pieces, but we're gonna do an overview of the O C P and then an overview of the T M S. So this will just be a quick kind of introduction to the Official Community Plan. We're gonna kind of go through what an O C P is, kind of its role in community development and some key themes. And we've started to pull up through some of our background research. There'll be a few prodding questions in here, and as Dan suggested, yeah, it might be great to kind of touch base on these collectively at the end and through discussion. So just gonna go through at a high level some of the project goals related to the O C P. So kind of first and foremost is looking at kind of improving kind of the overall clarity of the document and looking at through this creating a more user user friendly O C P that can be used by residents and developers alike. This will involve consolidating post policies and including any amendments, regional policy objectives and neighborhood planning neighborhood planning work that has been done and integrating this into the updated O C P. We'll look to address some of the key issues. You'll see kind of key themes as a later in the presentation, we'll just kind of go through some of those topics, such as environment, housing and homelessness, infrastructure, et cetera, and then updating regulations to reflect current planning, regular current planning regulations, legislation and best practices. So just a quick overview for those who are not familiar, and I know many of you probably are, this kind of what an O C P is. So an O C P is is really the guiding document for community. It's a comprehensive policy designed to guide physical, environmental, economic, social and cultural development of the city. It outlines fundamentally the land uses that will be considered on specific properties. It sets regulations for each type of land use that is identified, so i.e. residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. It provides should provide clear direction to residents and developers about what type of growth and development is supported by the community. And within there is also a development permit area, which outlines specific considerations for development, i.e. environmental protection, hazard mitigation, design and other considerations for specific geographies. Councils for responsible sure ensuring as well as zoning by law amendments are consistent with the O C P. So, you know, the O C P is the guiding document and the zoning bylaws, the regulatory document that implements the vision of the O C P. So there's the need for consistency between those two pieces. So what can O C P do? It can do a lot of things. It can implement the policies of the O C P as identified. It can guide future growth and development. It can maintain and harmonize land use, and it can separate conflicting land uses as well as protect the environment, prevent development in hazard areas. It helps to ensure a degree of certainty for the community and developers. It manages the impacts of new development and provides direction on rezoning and development applications and much, much more. So in the interest of time, we'll carry on, but there's many things the O C P can do, and it's it's an important document for the community. So the role of the O C P in development, I've touched on this in a couple of points, but it's one of many policy tools that shapes how the city can grow. It'll be updated and reviewed to include the integration of other community planning documents. The city's completed, as well as regional planning initiatives. Following the adoption of existing, the existing policies of zoning, D C Cs, et cetera, should also be viewed for consistency with the new O C P. The O C P offers a framework to guide development and land management decision making. So in this sense, it should be clear about type of development is supported and where is intended to reflect the community's vision for growth and development and encourages resonance and rezonings and development applications to align themselves with the O C P's intent. And then the D P As again are the area specific developments. And, you know, they're designed to provide a degree of flexibility, but uniform enforcement of certain specific regulations and geographies. Again, this could be, you know, environmental or design related and, you know, affect different areas. So really, our approach is to focus and, you know, have a broad focus, look community wide. This is the document that has a broad vision and does not try to get into site specific issues that could result in major policy shift. You know, we're we, as Dan said, we've got a section at the end, we'll dive into kind of our engagement strategy. You know, we hope to engage early and often and provide valuable opportunities for residents to provide their input. We're big fan of keeping it practical, so ensuring clear, direct language that eliminates the potential for confusion. So clarity is key with these documents, and in the end, it will function as the bylaw. And to support this, too, adding some graphic content and illustrations in certain areas to clarify our points, and then balancing the diverse needs and multiple stake stakeholders within the process. So we've outlined a process that's gonna take about fourteen to sixteen months. We kicked off the project in March and really began a walk community and getting all the teams together and talking to each other. Phase one, also, we've initiated the background review. And we're going into phase two now, which will be looking at community information, gathering basically some feedback on the communities goals and what can be accomplished to the O C P, commentary on previous content to the O C P and some specific themes. So that's kind of phase two, which will take place from now. You know, also take place kind of over the course of summer into September, overlapping but kind of carrying forward through summer into the fall. We're gonna actually have the planned development. There'll be other points of feedback within that. And then eventually working our way towards the adoption of the O C P. So this will be a process of finalizing the O C P document, you know, integrating any updates and then public hearing and eventually adoption. So structure format, so again, readability is key. The current O C P has two hundred and eighty eight pages associated with it, including appendices. This in some ways makes it a challenging document to navigate. There's a lot of great content, but not everything in that needs to be within the bylaw itself. So we do see an opportunity to kind of consolidate and make the O C P a lot more kind of clear, crisp and concise, easier to navigate for residents and developers alike. This also helps provide certainty and break out clearly what the intent really is. This will include review, reviewing and refining, you know, definitions and directions and policies within that as well. And again, we're hoping to kind of add illustrations and other supporting figures where required. So part of analysis, and you can imagine, there's a broad scope when looking at Official Community Plan. You'll be looking at the physical aspects of the community, so land use, lot sizes, servicing, amenities, parks and transportation. So Dan will talk more about transportation in his section. But we really do, from the beginning, hope to look at these processes as partner processes and a joint effort to kind of look at transportation and official community planning holistically in the community and and look at the efficiencies between doing this work at the same time, of which there are many. We'll look at the market side of things, so population projections, demographics, housing supply and timing, basically what has happened in terms of development and demand in the community. We do have a Latin economist on the team who will be reviewing some of these key pieces. Looking at housing policies, sorry, planning principles and policies, so including things like housing diversity, smart density, urban design, community amenities and a confident comprehensive public engagement throughout. And then policy and regulation too. So again, integrating kind of the regulatory aspects of the plan and updating those as well, and alignment with, again, the zoning bylaw, neighborhood planning work that you've been doing as well. More for kind of a thought to think of and something to chew on as we're gonna go into the discussion piece at the end here. But you know, there's been a lot of previous planning work done in the city, obviously, and you know, there's a lot of inputs from different plans and different documents that have been completed over the years. You know, your current vision for the O C P is one of the best to be one of the most livable small towns in Canada. So something for council to think about as we embark on this process is what is what is the vision for this twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two O C P? What are some of the key themes that you think should be touched on? What speaks to the city of Duncan in today's day and age that we want to to build on? So there's been some really good thought, you know, we've kind of summarized here on the side of some of the other kind of vision statements that come from other planning documents. And we have, you know, the most livable small town in Canada, close knit community, sustainable infrastructure, affordable, safe and healthy, identified by its trees, active transportation facilities, protected enhanced habitats for salmon, a range of plant and animal species, clean air and safe and accessible transit services. So there's been a broad level of thinking that's already gone into what the community, you know, wants to look like and how it should look like. And I think you know, this is a question that we really want to get council's thoughts on and something we, you know, hope to to kind of build upon as we, you know, establish a vision and guiding principles for the next O C P. So in the current O C P, although the document is is quite long, it has a fairly concise set of land uses. There's low density residential, medium density and high residential. There's a commercial designation as well as a mixed use for medium and high combined commercial and medium slash high density residential institutional uses as well as parks and environmental uses. And there's currently a heritage designation as well that's implied in a very small number of discrete properties across the community. There's also six development permit areas. So as I said, these are specific regulations applied to you know, certain geographies across the city and with the goal of, you know, habitat protection or, you know, identification of hazards and or, you know, the downtown area encouraging, you know, higher levels of design and other types of, you know, unique regulations specific to those areas. So they can help with form and character. They can also help mitigate hazards such as steep slopes and flooding, as well as protect the natural environment. Your sixty P is currently included multifamily, residential, downtown, highway corridor, D P A, one for other commercial areas, one for natural environments and one for hazard lands. So these all have specific regulations within them, and we've gone through and reviewed them. And yeah, there's some opportunities to you know, support kind of how decent D P As are applied and ensure kind of greater consistency and, you know, addressing some key topics in some of those areas going forward. So you know, we've identified the need to kind of clearly identify those triggers from D C D P A regulations apply. So, you know, when is rather than just having policy and regulations, like when does X actually come into play? Including we include a review of amendments to the guidelines more closely match respond to the zoning bylaw, updating the guidelines and checklists to ensure that all references are up to date for both internal and external documents. And then references and and other things too should be clear, concise and directive to avoid confusion for those working on the staff side as well as the development side. So there's there's some areas that could probably be a lot more clear in terms of what those regulations are. In the current O C P two, there are six neighborhood areas that have been identified, as well as the downtown core and three neighborhood nodes. So this is an item too that we will be discussing in this process. So you've identified Karen's more Sentinel Heights Downtown Coronation, Chesterfield and Marchmont as kind of the existing neighborhoods. You know, through this process, we can discuss kind of how these fit into future growth and development and, you know, specifically to some of the work that's been done in the neighborhood planning and identifying those neighborhood nodes and ensuring that, you know, this is in fact what what is wished to be seen in Duncan in the future. So I'm gonna do a quick overview of some of the key themes. So based on a review, we've kind of pulled out some of the key topics, policy directions and whatnot regulations that are, you know, guiding the document as it is. And this will be an opportunity to to just kind of outline some of the the kind of core policy areas of the O C P, kind of beyond those land use designations and the D P As, which are kind of the regulatory you know, implementation of some of the key policy elements that are identified kind of towards the front end of the existing O C P. So one of the key things that you know, we've discussed at the onset of this project is the need to integrate some of the regional planning work that has been done between Duncan and its other community partners in the Couch and Valley. So there are elements of administration, emergency planning, economic development, solid waste management, regional parks, environmental initiatives and hazards, regional transportation planning and regional housing planning, that work that is being done kind of through the C V R D, the city of Duncan, you know, the district North Couch and others, and you're showing that Duncan being kind of, you know, center of the region, you know, embraces and considers policies that, you know, speak to its neighbors and ensuring kind of regional alignment with regional planning work. Housing and homelessness, this is identified and shown as a key issue for the city. You know, reviewing the current O C P, there's some current provisions to support diverse housing options, such as encouraging infill and new development, increasing density, increasing affordable housing options and increasing housing diversity. And, you know, connecting those denser forms of housing with, you know, the downtown and neighborhood commercial nodes. Some other key initiatives include completing a housing needs assessment. In a cousin, cousin Couch and Housing Association has undertaken a number of initiatives and increased partnerships with the community and neighbor jurisdictions. So this is a key topic, and we understand that we'll be, you know, digging into this quite a bit. And yeah, certainly an opportunity to reach out to the community and get their thoughts on, you know, housing homelessness in the city of Duncan through our engagement process. Infrastructure, you know, critical component of development in any community. Again, we have engineers on our team that will be doing some, you know, reviews, current infrastructure and, you know, some critical thoughts in terms Again, we have engineers on our team that will be doing some, you know, reviews, current infrastructure and, and, you know, some critical thoughts in terms of, you know, how does, you know, the balance between increasing density or encouraging growth lineup with infrastructure? What are some of the key sticking points? What are some of those considerations? And I think when we look at OCP, there is, you know, there's a vision and policies and then there's kind of the brick and mortar pieces too. So is, is the, the context and the, you know, the infrastructure there to support what, what we're trying to achieve through the OCP and its vision? So, you know, in this we've, we understand the city provides water to a large area outside the city. Existing infrastructure, there's likely require some upgrades to service desired development in the future. Season engineering department is working on water demand assessments, additional demand forecasting is likely needed. And need for efficient updated infrastructure. So this isn't an infrastructure plan or a water master plan or sewer master plan, what it is, it's kind of taking stock what's there today and trying to think about. Okay, what, you know, what, where are we going to start hitting some of the barriers in terms of water supply or, you know, wastewater, things like that? Transportation, my colleague Dan will speak a lot to that, but that's a key consideration as well as you densify and, you know, encourage frontage improvements and things like that. You know, how do you balance that with traffic and being kind of again, the center for the region? So also important questions in here. And then also kind of looking at how, how do you pay for infrastructure, right? What are some of the incentives, community many contributions, development cost charges? How do these align with the DCCs, you know, at a high level, just kind of understanding what, what you want to achieve? Where some of those barriers are, then, you know, what are some of the mechanisms that you'll use to support infrastructure growth and development in the future? So some environmental considerations, so the current initiatives around the BC climate action charter, reaching the shift with new normal couch and some key considerations to OCP would be these local regions of and then, you know, couch river corridor enhancement, development hazards. So again, steep slopes, flood plains, things like that and other priority areas of, you know, natural protect natural environment protection and enhancement. And I connecting into this is looking at parks, trails and open space. You know, the city maintains, you know, a few significant parks, but you know, there as growth and development occurs. You know, there's a need for likely need for additional parkland or at least additional programming within those parks. And I think it leads to kind of a couple of questions as to where does that land come from, knowing that the city is mostly built out at this point? And, you know, if you were to look at land acquisition of parks, what are some of the mechanisms that you would implement to achieve, you know, expansion to your park system? So again, this kind of plays into development cost charges and community many contributions and things like that. So as, as you grow in population, the parks will be busier and the space that you have will be utilized differently. So again, to looking at the couch and river connections and repairing area protection strategies for land dedication. You know, review connectivity and walkability. This is another key connection to the transportation ability strategy. And safety and design being key consideration opportunities for those regional park connections as well. So another area of interest, obviously, we've talked about Dunkin, the city of Duncan being kind of the regional center. And it has a very, you know, urbanized downtown that has, it's very walkable. It's got a great urban forum in a lot of ways and it's, it's the center of the Cowichan Valley. And it's really an opportunity and really like in our discussions and knowing the city and growing up on the island, it's, it's got great bones. And how do you build upon a great downtown and really focus on making this the economic and social and community hub for the region? And you know, some of the key considerations and this works in the previous OCP as well as others are, you know, mixed use of businesses and residential balancing kind of the need for adding growth and densities on commercial uses, you know, animating public spaces through design and place making site redevelopment. What are those sites in, in the community that are likely to redevelop? What do we want to achieve from the redevelopment of those sites? Looking again, connections to TMS to improve connectivity and addressing safety concerns through social and economic policies. For urban design, some of the key things we're looking at too is ensuring it's active, vital and pedestrian oriented. And encouraging flexibility within those spaces. So improved safety and comfort, instilling a sense of place, creating space that is like truly resilient and environmentally aspirational. So, you know, connecting the city with its green spaces and encouraging kind of, you know, sustainable design within place making and other things like that. You know, looking at complimentary uses within the community. So how do neighboring uses in business kind of build on each other? Or so the positive aspects that come through, you know, the, the re-envisioning of frontages in downtown and redevelopment of sites. And those are some key connections between this work and the OCP. You know, where streets, where, where the parcel align ends your streets begin and that connection, I think, is really important in this process. And then, you know, understanding universally accessible, so enhancing accessibility and mobility for all users. And again, improved connection of place. There's more themes to touch on here, but this last one before we jump into the transportation mobility strategy. But arts, culture and heritage. So this is a key opportunity to kind of think about the vision and goal statements that we discussed earlier in the presentation. You know, how, think about how to encourage and support arts and culture for the benefit of residents and economic development. Now, how do you encourage a place that, you know, is this the vibrant center, social and community hub for the Cowichan Valley? Thinking about its history, its heritage, its digital identity and other things like that, building it into, you know, the OCP and kind of how you want to see that being reflected on, you know, the walls and streets of the city. And this includes like reviewing, you know, dedication for potential land, both space for arts and culture, looking at policies to support public art murals, grants and incentives municipal, regional, provincial level for artists. So also considering that and generally policy support for those things in the community that you feel contribute to the, the arts, culture and heritage of the city. So also take a look at some of the heritage, current heritage designation and think about, you know, you know, some strategies for me, how to address, you know, protection of heritage buildings and things like that. So in the interest of time, we've going to move on to the transportation mobility strategy now. So there's any burning questions, feel free to jump in before I pass it off to my colleague Dan Casey.
Okay. While hearing none, maybe I'll, I'll move on here with an overview of the transportation and mobility strategy. Think what I'd like to do is speak a little bit of some of the basics as to sort of what and why TMS might be done. And to go through a little bit more fine grained on the project itself and some of the technical activities as well as the engagement activities. And then I want to turn the corner and talk about some of the early observations from our team and really start to get some insights and input from, from council as well. And we'll end with a few prodding questions that'll lead into a Q and A session. So the transportation and mobility strategy will guide planning and decision-making for all transportation modes over the next 20 years. If I could emphasize a few words within that statement, it's that it'll guide planning and decision-making. And really this piece about all modes is extremely important. And you'll see as I go through the next series of slides, we're really emphasizing truly all modes. So what is the TMS? The TMS will describe the community's vision and priorities for multimodal transportation. It will identify guiding principles and establish multimodal transportation policies that again, apply across all modes. It will identify a long-term multimodal networks and facility design. So these will be plans, maps that identify where on which streets and which corridors, certain facilities should be applied. There'll also be a description of those facilities so that as they're built out into the future, there's some consistency where we make sure what's built meets best practice. And then lastly, the TMS will establish a path forward. And so it'll give guidance to how the TMS itself and its key recommendations and directions can be implemented. What's driving the TMS? And we take our cue from this, from your, from your request for proposal document and the thinking we've done today. And so you're at the center of a growing region. And so we need to recognize that within the city itself, as well as what's happening around the city, it's continuing to grow. We need to make sure we're planning for that in how we build out our transportation infrastructure. You, along with other communities, you have an aging population. And so that's important in terms of how we think about what sorts and where transportation facilities are built. Healthy lifestyles and, and a desire to see healthy lifestyles and wellbeing amongst your population. Engaging in active travel modes, things that get people out, engaging in physical, physical activity is one great way of meeting this objective. The economy, so supporting your residents' ability to travel to access employment as well as individuals from the Cowichan Valley as a whole to access your downtown and your commercial businesses. A goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and so then specifically to on-road emissions. And how through modal shift, we might prioritize and incentivize trips by sustainable travel modes. And then lastly, it ties in with your asset management and this idea that you have a, a large base of transportation infrastructure. And so proactive planning for that is dovetails in with your asset management approach. Who is the TMS for? It's honestly for everyone, but if we're to isolate some of the, the key audiences, it's first and foremost, it's for Duncan residents. And as Sean touched on it, we intend this document, both these documents to be readable, free of jargon, visually appealing and kind of accessible in language that's understood by, by everyone. Another key audience is staff and council, neighboring communities as well as external agencies and service providers. So really communicating to those outward face of organizations, the, the, the plan and the priorities of Duncan with respect to transportation. Another important one there is the land development community. So we can clearly articulate in the TMS what the city's expectations are for the build outs of transportation infrastructure alongside new development. And then lastly, anyone else, and I, I think it's important that this document's going to help communicate some of the priorities and values of your community. And so we're, you know, put ourselves out there in the, in the public sphere and paint a picture of where Duncan sees itself going as a community. And specifically in terms of transportation and mobility. What will the document include? And so this is, this will evolve as the project progresses. But from as a starting point, we see the final documents sort of being structured to include first an overview and sort of setting the stage section where we present a bit of understanding and background specific to transportation in Duncan. There'll be a section documenting what we heard. And so we'll touch on it a bit later, but there's going to be a fairly extensive and multi-phased engagement approach undertaken for both these projects. And so we want to clearly document both the, the, the activities that were undertaken, the level of participation that we saw in those activities as well as, and maybe even more importantly, what we heard. And so how the inputs through all of those various activities have helped shape and been reflected in the final TMS document. The document will include a framework that highlights the vision, goals and objectives for the document itself, as well as for multimodal transportation more broadly. Strategies, policies and programs as well as a long-term multimodal networks and design guidelines, which I touched on earlier. And that'll really articulate what it is, the future and long-term build out of, of multimodal networks will look like in Duncan. And then lastly, an implementation strategy and action plan that road maps how we're going to get there. And then finally, how will the TMS vision be realized? So there's a number of ways it'll be realized, but some of the more tangible ones would be through, through capital investment and service provision by the city itself. Another, another avenue is through coordinated implementation with adjacent communities and external agencies, such as perhaps the province or BC Transit. It'll be partially achieved through land development. And so clearly communicating the requirements and guidelines and, and expectations of development with respect to build, build out of transportation infrastructure. And then also we've seen in past that having strong plans in place that are very tangible outcomes in terms of investments and projects that your community prioritizes puts you in a very strong position to benefit from some of the external funding and grant opportunities that are out there. And in my fifteen year plus career, I have not seen the magnitude of grant opportunities out there for transportation and specifically sustainable transportation that there is right now. So by getting this TMS in place, you're going to proactively put yourself in a good position to benefit from those opportunities. I wanted to just quickly make note of that where this is not going to be invented from scratch. You have some pre-existing plans and documents that, really good work, that's going to help guide what the TMS includes. So specifically highlighting the Duncan active transportation plan that's about six or seven years old now, but still, still relevant and some really good guidance and network planning in there. There's been some corridor planning work on, on highway one. And so some information that can be gleaned from that. You also have an older transportation plan that we're hoping to get our hands on and just sort of understand. Prior to that, what the vision and the directions were for transportation, but knowing and expecting that there'll need to be a bit of a paradigm shift to reflect more recent guidance in your, in your guiding plans and OCP. And then regionally, there's some good documentation as well in terms of the, the regional transit future plan and a regional parks and trails master plan that help give some direction for where work and network planning within the city itself might tie in with some of the surrounding communities. We also, the other piece that's not on the screen there, but is worth highlighting is that North Cowichan is undertaking a similar transportation planning exercise over the next while. And our hope is that through both those processes, we can coordinate some of the network planning to make sure and some of the technical activities behind them to make sure that they're coordinated and that efficiencies are gained. And, and, and really we're doing the right thing and making sure that we really don't, transportation doesn't stop at the municipal borders. It extends beyond to facilitate regional trip making. So in terms of the project timeline, this is looking very similar to what you saw from Sean on the OCP review timeline. There's four phases to the TMS, the first where we're in and nearly complete now, which is really about project startup and getting some of our engagement and communications planning in place. Phase two will be some of the background technical activities and developing community understanding. I'll dive in a little bit into what some of those activities might actually be. Phase three will be happening through late spring, early summer, and that's to establish some of the key directions for the TMS. And then phase four is late summer and into the fall. And that's really where we start to actually draft the strategy document and work it through the, the draft phases into finalization. So some of the key activities in phase two, that's where we get into some technical activities around collecting traffic data as well as regional, citywide and regional mobility to understand some of the, the magnitude of multimodal traffic at key intersections along key corridors as well as understand more globe, more globally or at a more regional level is how people are traveling and where they're traveling to and from. And so we've got some pretty neat ways of using technology to start to understand that those mobility patterns pieces better than we currently do. Where you will, we actually did last week undertake an accessibility audit. So we have a, a member on our team named Stan Levinhorst and he's, this is what he does. He's an inclusive design expert. And see, he was actually working through your downtown and throughout the community last week, starting to catalog some of the accessible infrastructure that's in place. And then with emphasis on where some of those key gaps and barriers might be. And so the outcomes of that work will be woven into the, to the phase two, the working paper that you'll see in due time. We will be inventorying your multimodal transportation network. There'll be an inventory of downtown parking. And then one piece that we're really pleased to be pursuing here is we're going to be developing a smart mobility primer. And really what that's going to do is touch on some of the less conventional components to a multimodal transportation system and start looking out as to how transportation and mobility demand might change in future. Some of the options that are available to us in terms of how, how, how we travel around now, how, how that might change in future. And then how we might reflect that in a more tangible transportation and, and mobility strategy such as this. Other phase two activities on the engagement side, there'll be a launch event. We're going to have a webpage up and we'll be populating it with materials as we go. There'll be an online survey. There'll be an online survey and interactive mapping, which allows residents to go online and place pins on a map that to tell us and tell yourselves where some of the, maybe the building blocks are, the good things, as well as where some of the real challenges are currently. And then there'll be stakeholder outreach, both with First Nation as well as with some key adjacent communities and service providers. So getting into phase three, and this is a little further out still, but some of the engagement activities will include a joint open house event. There'll be another survey where we sort of circle back and temperature check, I guess, on some of the initial findings and and then communities' response to those. And we planned again webpage updates and we from from this point on, a series of short snippet videos that would be very easy to digest and gain an understanding of how the project's evolving and what some of the key key findings, key directions might be. Technical activities will include policy and bylaw review, and that'll be done somewhat jointly with the O C P review. We'll be undertaking multimodal network developments, so starting to establish what some of those long, long term networks might be for across all modes. And that'll specifically include a traffic modeling component where we use a lot of that background data that I talked about and model out the conditions on your road network, both for today as well as into the future. And then we'll be looking at specifically at downtown parking and start seeing to use that inventory we collected to understand what the what the need for parking might be in future. And then moving sort of modally or themed into some of the key pieces that the TMS is going to include and might address. And this will evolve somewhat as the project moves through. But specifically under active transportation and accessibility, we'll be looking at universal design and accessibility. Both understanding where those barriers are now, as well as establishing guidelines that ensure that future facility development, future infrastructure is built with universal design, universal access in mind. That's going to be a real foundational piece for all of this. We're going to be identifying walking and rolling facilities, both again, where new facilities might go as well as some guidelines on how they should be designed and developed. Similar for cycling network and facilities. We're going to talk about some of these end of trip facilities and supporting amenities, so things like bike parking. Potentially shower and lockup. This might include bus stops and how you might transition from one mode, say, walking onto transit and what needs to happen at the bus stop level to facilitate that. And then this piece will also include a little bit of consideration of public transit service levels, routes and infrastructure, including bus stops. Motor vehicles in the street network, we're going to be talking at a considerable level of detail on the street network and both what's in place now, what might be needed in future to kind of keep up with local and regional growth. There'll be some guidance specific to street design. We'll be touching on trucks and good goods movement. There'll be specific consideration given to interregional travel, so not just what's happening within Duncan itself, but how trips might begin or end outside of Duncan. And how that's reflected within the the more localized street network. And then we're going to be talking about downtown parking and parking management as well. And then the kind of the last piece, and I touched on this a little bit earlier, is this concept of sort of looking out a little bit further and considering multimodal transportation through a slightly different lens and trying to understand how how we can build facilities, how we can build out our networks today that reflects and and respond to some of the either changing and emerging travel options currently or things and and options that might come about a certain distance down the line. And so some key pieces here, street design, we're going to be considering street corridors, street rights of way as complete streets. And so no longer is that simply a a space for traffic to move. We're going to make sure that this is framed in a way that it's that those streets are considered holistically and multimodally. Neighborhood traffic management is something that we want to zero in on, and there's definitely some overlap here with land use and the O C P review. And so we want to understand how the TMS can set up a framework by which future street design, future requests for traffic calming in residential neighborhoods might be framed up in a way so that it's, I'm not going to solve it all through here, but we we provide a bit of our framework so that there's a clear understanding about how neighborhood streets and how neighborhood traffic is to be managed in future. Transportation demand management is a bit of, it's somewhat jargon, but you're going to hear a lot about this. And so it's really what T D M describes is traditionally the approach to transportation. Transportation planning has been about understanding demand and then building supply or building new infrastructure to respond to that demand. T D M really refers to better understanding what that demand is, looking at opportunities to influence that demand so that we don't just don't jump to the conclusion that we need new costly infrastructure. And so T D M, this transportation demand management is going to be a key lens for the TMS. And then perhaps lastly, and I touched on this before, but was just looking out and making sure that we are cognizant and reflecting emerging and future travel options. So a few key areas, we'll just go through quickly here, a few key and tangible areas where some of the directions from the TMS and the O C P might very logically align. One is on defining neighborhoods and and specific character areas. And from the TMS side of things, making sure that unique guidance is applied with respect to street design that suits those contexts, that might also include French requirements and the way that parking in those areas is managed really should differ depending on the character and the context of the area. There'll be a livable neighborhoods framework that speaks more specifically to neighborhoods and residential areas, and it'll guide decision making around street design, widths and geometry, speed limits, traffic management and how how parking is supplied and and managed. And then lastly, there'll be a pretty broad policy and regulatory review that considers both policy regulation for land use as well as specific for transportation. And so a prime example and something we will be turning our attention to during this project is off street parking regulations, which has a fairly significant impact on both how people travel, but also the the form that land use and development might take. So I'll just go through quickly on just some early observations and some background. This is information that's presented to you that, you know, we wanted to get everyone on the same page, but this might also be, you know, review for all of you as you're quite familiar with your community already. And so some of the key challenges that, you know, I grew up on the island of, I've been to your city a fair number of times, but again, like very open to and really seeking input and feedback from the group. Some of the key challenges, you've got historic street design, and this is very common in small and mid sized communities up and down the island. You've got streets that were designed before, in some cases sidewalks, but in many cases before cycling infrastructure was really a consideration. And so we're sort of playing catch up on some of that on some of the older street design. You've got some congestion and potentially safety concerns at some key intersections generally in and around downtown, also out near the highway, but really sprinkled throughout the city. We touched on this earlier, but you you're kind of the heart of the region, you're the heart of the valley. And so a lot of the travel demand isn't the vehicles you see or the people you see in your community. Their trip may not have begun or ended in in Duncan, and so there's a lot of overlap with regional trip making. You've got Highway One, which does act as a real barrier. It can be difficult from a vehicular traffic perspective as well as and especially from an active transportation perspective to travel east to west. You've got historic challenges with parking in your downtown. You've got some real challenges with accessibility and accessible infrastructure. And that plays out both in terms of individuals with disabilities, meeting their own physical disabilities, meeting their own mobility needs, but also and and in your sort of directions and 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 objectives to become an age friendly community also impacts folks who are aging in your community as well. And then lastly, it's really about coordination with these adjacent communities and making sure that's happening. And just a few key mobility statistics I wanted to present to the group, and we'll be using these as we as we move forward into this process. So the pie graph that's on the right hand side of the screen there. This is your mode share for trips to work for commute trips, and this is among your residents. And so what we see, and this is, this is from 2060. This is from the census. So what we see is a little over seventy five percent of trips are made in a vehicle, whether that's as a driver or as a passenger in a in a vehicle. You've got about sixteen percent of trips made by walking and then three percent on transit and two by bike. And so I'll put this in the context on the next slide here. When we look around the Couch and Valley, we see so on the top bar is is Duncan. And we start to compare that to North Cowichin to Lake Cowichin. These are the municipalities, North Cowichin, Lake Cowichin and Ladysmith, as well as then in the bottom to the regional districts, the region as a whole. What we start to see is your, really what it is, is your driving mode share, your driver mode share at seventy one percent comes in meaningfully lower than any of the other communities. And really where that's made up is you've got a significantly higher proportion of trips made by walking at sixteen percent, where I think the next highest is Lake Cowichin at seven. And so the transit piece, the cycling piece, they're relatively consistent with the region as a whole. But what we are seeing is likely due to the small geographic area, we're seeing a higher proportion of walking trips and a lower proportion of driving trips. Another key piece here in this sort of, this does relate is your commute duration. And so about half of trips are less than fifteen minutes, and that's really what is partially reflected in the the ability to make walking trips to work. You do see still that you've got almost a quarter of the trips are half an hour or more, which presumably those are regional trips. And so when you start talking about, okay, knowing that at least a quarter, almost a quarter of our trips are made over half an hour, that probably rules out walking, well, it does rule out walking for all, but I guess the most confident enthused, it makes cycling not realistic for many. And then it really public transit becomes the primary alternative to driving. And then this last piece I wanted to pick up on is just, and this is no mystery to to this group, but just to visualize what walking distance looks like in Duncan. So your municipal boundary is shown in the black line on the bottom. And we've using City Hall as the the center. We've drawn approximate five and ten minute walking circles. And so what you start to see is, you know, from the center of downtown, you can get too much of the municipality in a ten minute walk. So with that, I'll wrap up a few prodding questions I wanted to leave you with, and I think we'll we'll do Q and A in a second here, but I just wanted to kind of get the creative juices flowing with a few discussion topics here. And so I'll I'll read them out loud and we can come back to the slide if if you want to see this again, but. So what is your vision for the Duncan TMS and multimodal transportation more broadly? How will Duncan residents travel ten, twenty, thirty years from now? How do we balance the desire to address traffic concerns as well as encourage active transportation? And how will the TMS be implemented? So in my mind, those those prodding questions are all related to what is the vision for transportation? What is the vision for this document? I would also love some feedback and input on what are the biggest transportation challenges you face in Duncan? So we've highlighted a few, but would love to sort of glean insight from from folks like yourselves. And then lastly, any ideas or thoughts on how the TMS might be coordinated with some of the surrounding communities? So with that, I think we'll transition back to Sean, and Sean is going to walk us through the joint community engagement process for 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 both documents, for both projects.
So yeah, just quickly, for the engagement strategy, we're currently drafting kind of an outline of of what we're planning to do. You know, this will include engagement objectives, kind of key key messaging, project specific messages. So messaging for both the joint process as well as each specific project, identification of stakeholders and audiences. Some project branding, which you're getting a taste of in this presentation. Some are key community queue, communication tools and engagement activities and the timeline as well. So some of the key tools that we're looking at are going to be a project website, bang the table, promotional materials, both digital and print form, social media, targeted stakeholder outreach and as well as some promotional videos. Ideally putting together a couple of those, one or two of those. So in terms of the timeline, this just kind of shows the kind of the engagement activities that are going to occur kind of over the next fourteen to sixteen months for both the T N P and the O C P. So those in yellow show kind of joint efforts. The the green are the O C P and the red are the TMS. So starting kind of here at the end of April, we're hoping to begin kind of steering committee workshops for both the O C P and TMS as well as reaching out to some of the First Nations. Getting into spring, kind of end of April, May, we're hoping to kind of launch the project website, conduct online surveys for both the O C P and TMS and then do kind of a joint launch event as well as some O C P stakeholder workshops. There'll be kind of a TMS reporting back period and steering committee meeting. Stakeholder check in in the summer and another joint open house. This is probably where we'll start presenting some of our draft themes and concepts, as well as another online survey for the TMS. It's reporting back. There'll be another stakeholder check in too in the fall. More O C P and open house, online survey and a steering committee workshop and then a final TMS online survey. And then there'll be some reporting back summaries of what we heard. At this point, the TMS is wrapping up and the the O C P will continue on for a few more months is discussed, and there'll be another touch point as with the steering committee as well as a public hearing on the draft plan and there'll be some iterations and refinement within that. So I'll pass it back over to Dan here, who's going to talk a little project identity, and I think we're we're kind of getting into our discussion now. So yeah.
Okay, thanks, Sean. So just briefly here, one of the things we want to do with this initiative with both projects is a bit of an identity that your residents will resonate with. And with the intent of generating a bit of enthusiasm for the process and maybe some additional pride in the final outcome, we'll say. And so what we we've taken an initial stab at what we think a project identity could be. And to be honest, the material that you've been looking at for the last little while is i- is already inching in that direction, but we did want to reach out with this group and and have the chat. If there's a specific direction you'd like to take the identity for this initiative, giving you the chance to sort of take ownership for that as well as making sure that what's coming forward does a nice job of reflecting what what your community is all about. So with that, I mean, what we have for a starting point here is our thinking was that the overarching title for for the initiative could be connecting community. And so the idea being that sort of connecting really plays on the TMS and this idea of of movement and mobility. And then community is really foundational to the official community plan and really pulls that transportation and mobility as well. We thought for a supporting tagline, moving the soul of our community. So again, themes of transportation, themes of community, it also really the word soul and we can play with that. But the idea that Duncan really does sit at the at the heart or the soul of the Couch and Valley. And so thought that might do a nice job of articulating that. And then in the end, the, you know, joint process, but two distinct documents in the end. We were thinking as typically often, not not always, but often when we produce documents like this, community plans, there's sort of a you know, transportation and mobility strategy or official community plan are the the technical sounding terms. So often we have a subtitle to them that generates a bit of enthusiasm. So our thinking was for for these, it could be transportation and mobility strategy, small town going places. And for the official community plan, it could be official community plan, small town locally focused, or it could be small town, community focused. So with that, the these would be fleshed out with visuals and colors and fonts and things that are in keeping with your So with that, the these would be fleshed out with visuals and colors and fonts and things that are in keeping with your with your own visual identity standards, but sort of overarching. Curious on the on the group's thoughts and and take on what's been presented here. And then last, before we open it up, we just wanted to talk about what we'll be doing over the next month or two. And so some of the key next steps, finalizing the engagement strategy that identifies how and when we'll be going out to public and stakeholders. There'll be an ongoing review and analysis of background reports and data. We'll begin with our technical review and starting to collect specific to the transportation mobility project. Traffic data collection will be inventorying parking and multimodal facilities. And like I mentioned, it actually happened last week, we completed the accessibility audit. One of the key next steps for the OCP is chair selection for the advisory steering committee. And then once we get later into April and into May, it'll be to to initiate the phase one community and stakeholder engagement activities. And so that could be happening as soon as the end of this month, if not into May. So with that, I think we'll wrap up. And so recognizing there's a lot of material there, there were a few different areas that both Sean and I prompted questions or we're specifically seeking feedback. I think what we'll do is open it up and you can almost ask questions as you please on whatever portions of the material you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Sean and Dan for the presentations. Questions from the peanut gallery?
Yeah.
Tom Duncan?
Am I unmuted? Thanks. Yes. So I guess one of the questions I have is I don't really want to see a huge focus on parking downtown because you know, we want to encourage walking downtown. So that's just one of the things that I think that we have to look at. We already have, as far as I'm concerned, lots of parking in the downtown area. And including the mound and and people that park over at the mall as well and walk. So I I think that that's something that I don't want to put a huge focus on looking at parking again because we we've looked at it over the years. I do have some concerns around making sure that we get enough public input because the last time we did the OCP, there was a lot of community input and it and obviously in these times it's hard to get that. So and I guess my vision for ten, twenty, thirty years is that I I see more electrification. I I want to see more divided bike lanes that would also accommodate electrified scooters or the other four-wheel drive scooters as well. So I I see that we are going to have more walking and short trip transportation modes. Maybe it's that one wheel. What is it like a one-wheeled skateboard thing I've seen around town or who knows? But that's what I see is is moving more towards electrification and and short trip transportation modes. Perhaps the transit system is going to be more like Uber. Right now we see buses driving around that are empty. But I think as transit moves more to some sort of system where you can actually just call for the the bus to be in your neighborhood, that might be beneficial for us too. But I think we do have to be cognizant of the fact that a couple of times we've seen attempts to reduce service into our residential areas. So we got to make sure that that service stays there. So I don't know if that helps much or not.
You Tom, anyone else?
Yes, Carol here. I agree with Tom. I I think that we've done the parking thing through the hilt and we are already going to be adding more parking and we have the parking on the secondary parking on Kenneth Street. And one of the things it to me is really, really important is to make sure that we have enough community involvement in this, particularly for people that are not my age group, which is sixty, seventies, but younger people, because they're the ones that are going to be benefiting from this in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Carol. Someone else?
I'd like to ask a question. Dan and Sean, thank you for your presentation. Do you, do you get right down to? I find the ability of people to get off the highway coming either from the south, from Victoria, from the north, the, we, we have no turning lanes. And I know we're all talking about future types of transportation and all that, I understand. But do we have the ability to procure land so that we have right turn? People, a lot of people coming out of Victoria, coming into this area from the south, and they may live in Maple Bay. And they cannot get off the highway easily if there's a big lineup. And I'm just wondering, all of that kind of stuff is considered, is it, you fellows?
Yeah, so we will be looking at, I think we have ten or twelve of your key intersections in town. And so highway intersections will will be included. And I think, I mean, do we have the property there? I mean, it's probably a case-by-case basis. We we can identify the need or the desire for turn lanes, but like this document won't. And we can even comment on, is there the land in place to do it now versus do we put policy in place that says we want to establish the land when when the, when it becomes, when the opportunity becomes available? That sort of thing can be highlighted, absolutely.
Anyone else?
Yes, please, if I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jenny, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you for the presentation. That was really thorough. Really looking forward to this process. And I just wanted to emphasize as well how much I agree with the points made by Counselor Duncan and Counselor Newington. While I do think it's definitely valuable to get that inventory of parking and to look at parking, it definitely, in my opinion, shouldn't be the main focus. And yeah, thank you. Great presentation.
Somebody else?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to speak again if I could or ask a question.
Please go ahead, Carol.
On our, on our, Dan and Sean, on our intersection of of Canada Avenue and Trunk, we have a a series of lights and and so on, which which work. But do you fellows see any simplification? It's over the railway tracks and all. There's a whole mishmash of things going on there. And I'm just wondering if you, if if this would, if this strategy would would look at that intersection and come up with maybe something, an alternative without all the lights.
We're definitely going to take a look at it. We're going to hear what the what the community has to say. I can say, having done a fair number of these plans in other places that are not dissimilar to Duncan, this spacing, we have, you know, rail line and then two signalized intersections with minimal spacing between them. Not terribly common. And so where we love to sort of look for parallels in other communities, I'm afraid we're not going to find too many for exactly that. Definitely going to look at it and we're definitely going to see what the opportunities might be, whether it's alter the way the signals perform now, whether it's, you know, removal or a change in the traffic control that's there right now. All of those things can be on the table. I'm really keen to hear actually what, whether it's downtown business, whether it's, whether it's residents, what both sort of what they find to be the real issue. Then also just any, any ideas that folks might have on how how to make that that situation better.
Do you fellows also get into looking at the beautification of the project or not?
Well, I think maybe I'll start, but then I think it probably comes more in on the OCP, on the TMS side of things. The lens of complete streets, we're going to be emphasizing opportunities for landscape and boulevards where previously maybe they weren't in place. And so there'd be an element of it in terms of what happens within the the street right of way. And then I think there might even be a greater opportunity within the official community plan, which Sean can probably touch on.
Yeah, and I think that's a good example of how these two plans can really work and talk to each other. You know, I think there's definitely policy support that can be included for kind of enhanced streetscapes and beautification. I think one of the other tools is I talked about the development permit areas at the beginning of the presentation. Through that, you can identify areas of the community where you'd like to see kind of higher standards for design, urban design. Yeah, I think it's with that, it's kind of fine regulation, find kind of balance between kind of having those appropriate regu- regulations that can support that and policies as well as what, you know, can reasonably be enforced and implemented to by staff as well. So thinking about what some of those maybe easy wins look like and and then having support of the TMP, you know, be able to show what we mean by some of these enhancements as well. So yeah, certainly opportunities to encourage streetscape enhancements through both documents.
Anyone else? Mayor Staples?
Thanks. Counselor Brooke, so thanks for the presentation and and I agree with the the conversation that council's having specifically around parking and also the involvement of voices, you know, given that where we're at and where we may be at for who knows how long right now in terms of being able to gather people and communicate. I just, I'm looking forward to seeing how you involve people because I think that that is one of the biggest and most important and valuable pieces of this is involving the community in this discussion. And and as Counselor Newington said, you know, young people in in, you know, indigenous voices, seniors, basically making sure that people aren't left out, I guess, is really what's important, I think, in this process. And how do we do that or how do you do that, given that this, this, the time that we're in? So I look forward to seeing what comes of that and for the creative ways that I know that you will be able to engage people. I've, I feel like I I totally agree about, yeah, the the parking downtown. I I think that we've done so much work on that and and that there are a lot of other aspects of the transportation plan that we really need to to focus on for the for the the city as a whole. And to start to bring different pieces together, including how we move without cars, you know, and connect with 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 parking in town and and moving people on and off the highway. In terms of the the vision statements that you talked about, I would really like it if if council could have some some time and 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 or be a part of, you know, that sort of visioning process. I'm I'm assuming there's going to be ways that we can be a part of that to send you different ideas that we have around that. I feel like there was a lot of information that we got today. And I need some time to kind of, you know, roll that through my head after hearing everything and and wanting to just sort of be able to to spend a bit more time coming up with with maybe some thoughts and feedback for that. But also just being involved in the process to really hear what people are saying about all of these different, different areas. And when I think of, you know, that I loved the the move, I I can't remember what it was, I didn't write it down. But the one that you had about the movement, the small town, what was it?
All small town going places.
Going places. Yeah, I really liked that one. In terms of the OCP, one of the things that always stands out for me from sort of the beginning of COVID and during COVID and and just that, you know, like you talked about us being the the center, people call it the jewel of, you know, the all sorts of different names have come up. One of the things that I've kind of really has grown on me and speaks to that, I think to some of what you're, what you're talking about in in bringing these plans together is we did this like small, small-town, big heart. Because and that kind of captures that, you know, the heartbeat in the transportation and I just, and just the, the, you know, the heart that the city has. Or, you know, or those like big dreams or big visions or something because we're at a time now when we're doing an OCP at an unprecedented juncture where, you know, as we're going through this process, we're also going to be planning for a future post-pandemic. That's a huge opportunity. And we have to do that with heart and we have to do that with vision and we have to be able to take the things that we've, you know, that we've started to do now that are different than the things that we've done before and really those have come from those places of people coming together and working together, that heart, that vision, you know, all of those things. And so that's not very well articulated, but that's really what I, what I felt when I was listening to your presentation about how that can be captured as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it totally was meant to plant the seeds. So yeah, we welcome any other additional feedback or comments from from council and others just to weigh in on that. And and yeah, there will be an opportunity through our engagement process for the community to to add the voice to that as well and elaborate on that, the vision and the goals.
Okay, anyone else? Then Sean and Dan from Urban Systems, thank you very much for your presentation. And we look forward to seeing ongoing results of this as we, as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone. Looking forward to it.
Okay, so you know what, we've, we've pushed through just about everything and I think we're at new business. Monica, do we have any new business? We have no new business. Then this is Tom's favorite part. Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn. That April six, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting be adjourned at one fifty-two PM. All those, yes? Yes, we're done. Thank you very much, all.
See you later.
Great work, Counselor Brooke.